Those air conditioners that we never installed.
Now we wonder.
There's a couple brand new ones in the box up here that we bought like five years ago. We were gonna stick in the windows and then everything lets out. Alright. Oh yeah, wow, this is cool.
What? Yeah, you are the IT department.
So.
So we have.
And the audience.
We have Frank here and there's Jennifer Sullivan, I believe, and we also have Bob and John online.
Okay, any addition or deletion?
Yeah, a bunch of additions. There wasn't much that was on there when it got sent out originally, but a bunch has come in in the last couple of days. Um, so Bob and Martha Shoneman have a request to address the town green benches. So I thought that could be new business. There's also a new, um, the library board is requesting a new member, so that also under new business. There's speed sign locations I thought we should talk about because it seems like the road crew might be at a decent time to be able to relocate those. Facilities report building improvements because there were a couple emails that went around today. Rudd Builders came by today and just wanted to get some clarifications on what actually needs doing. Um, and then there are three grant agreement forms that need to be filled out. Um, the Bike and Ped Grant, which we were awarded, the Grants and Aid, and the Highway Structures. So there are three forms there that need to be looked at. And there was another email that came in today that had to do with a new litigation for the town, which Mike has in front of him, so I don't know if you want.
And I have a copy of it as well, which Deb gave me.
Okay.
So.
I don't wanna see that at all. I don't know if.
Oh, we got an email.
Yeah. If that should be executive session or how you wanna handle that.
Alright, yeah, we probably have to go to executive session just to talk this over. As I say.
So executive session.
We'll push that down to the bottom at the end of the meeting, I guess. Sound good with you guys?
Um, and I'm just hearing that for, the audio's really bad for the echo, or the owl.
Owl.
Due to the echoes, so we'll try our best to project.
Um, as far as the agenda goes, I've got, um, I have a couple things to report on also in building improvements, I think. And I have, um, also, under new business, I was contacted by the D and H Rail Trail about a committee they're putting together, so I'll just bring that up in new business.
How about the minutes? Everybody like the minutes?
They look good. I'll move that we approved the minutes from last meeting.
And I'll second that. It's motion made and seconded, approved the minutes. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Bob? Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Approved. Nothing under previous requested, right?
Nope.
No announcements?
Nope.
Zoning administrators report?
So Jonas had sent something right after the last meeting that there were five permits that have recently been issued, and otherwise it's all pretty quiet, and he is still investigating the scanner that they've been wanting to acquire for maps and permits and such, so I believe that's it.
Okay, sounds good. And the planning commission report was last week?
None this time.
Yep.
And road foreman's report? Got anything to report?
Uh, the Kelly Hill project is pretty well, uh, finished as far as the base goes, but they're still waiting for chat to, uh, to produce some top.
Okay.
His pressure broke down, so they've got, uh, maybe sixty to eighty loads left to put on top of that. They're just waiting for chat to get back up and running. And they have started the project down at the old Dutchie Store, um, filling that, that in and got the deck, I think, pretty well out of there, so. That's what they've been working on, and we've gotta talk about winter sand, where we wanna get the material and, uh, you know, those sorts of things. And whether we were happy with what happened last year with the material and so on and so forth.
Are they working with Rupert?
They are, yeah. Um, it's been kind of on and off, just because Rupert, I believe, is digging out a couple ends of some bridges and doing some work where they're, they're tied up for a little bit, um, in between hauling.
Okay. I just noticed a lot of tracks there when I came through, so I assumed that they'd been.
Yeah, they have.
Okay.
So that's, it's all gone really well.
Okay, so what, what do you wanna do about winter sand? What's your feeling?
I think that the SLC material was excellent. Um, I'd like, I wouldn't wanna see any sand with it mixed on the dirt roads. My only concern is whether the sanders are gonna take it or not. Our guys seem to struggle awful with the sanders, with the bed chains, uh, just 'cause that stuff is crushed and it binds up. So they're always wanting to mix sand with it just so it flows better, but we don't need that stuff on the background.
Definitely not. I'm, I'm not in favor of any sand in the stone.
No, I would agree with that. Um, I think, I think we just need to, uh, maybe talk with Dorset and see what they do to, to get it to feed through their spreaders without trouble. Uh, you know, they broke some chains last year and, you know, I don't know if it's as simple as, hey, just slow the bed chains speed down a little bit and, and, uh, you know, maybe that'll, that'll help. So I think, you know, I could call, um, Jimmy Hughes and Dorset and just quiz him on that and get his take on it.
Yeah.
But I know the guys, our town crew would like to see more sand, but I, I don't agree with that. I think we can figure out a way to make our sanders work.
I, I feel that the sand that we're putting in with the stone is deteriorating the road surface, especially that stretch right off the blacktop that we had a good pressure run from Hartford. It, it made a slime on the top of it during the course of the winter, so.
And I can understand their side of it where, you know, you, you mix a bucket load of sand with the sander load and it does, it flows a lot better. It's not binding, it's not jamming up. I can understand, uh, where they're coming from, but maybe we can remedy that one way or another.
I think we need to work on a different thing. I definitely know that that, that uh, the A stone and stuff like that does go through sanders harder, we see it, and the small sanders, but, uh, it works.
It's way better for the roads.
Yeah, tune it in and certainly makes a, it's, it's improving our road base instead of deteriorating our road surface, definitely.
Didn't we get good feedback last year on the use of the stone?
Yeah, I think, you know, most everybody was happy with it. It worked really well. Um, and, and you're putting sixty to eighty loads of good material on the dirt roads a year, as opposed to sixty or eighty loads of slop and slime.
Right.
You know, and I feel like we didn't have as bad of a mud season this year either, which might've had to do with the weather, but you know, maybe putting the good stuff on the roads during the winter has also helped.
And making sure there's no salt in it.
Yeah.
So salt on the dirt roads makes mud. Um, so I know, you know, we don't put any salt in that.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty sure the sand pile does have some salt in it. I don't know that for sure, but.
We'll work on that and let us get prices from SLC.
Yeah.
The material from Hartford is quite a lot more money than the SLC material, or?
Um, I remember last year it was, it was more than enough difference between the two to justify pulling up over the hill.
Coming out of, yeah, okay.
And we can look at that again this year, and maybe we can look at trying to get some smaller clean stone to mix with the coarse material to, to help it.
Yeah.
I'll talk with Dale and Perry and Keith about that as well.
You know, Gary uses just A stones, which is three As, and that seems to work very well, and, and we see it, it holds up good on the, on the driveways and stuff, and especially in Iran, it's got a lot more grip.
I'll get some prices together for the next meeting, and, uh, I'll talk with Keith, Dale, and Perry, as well as, uh, Jimmy Hughes and Dorset.
Looks like someone might've said something on the chat. Can somebody click on that where it says chat and the little like number one is there?
Let's see. Did that come up or not?
We didn't see the chat come up. Can you comment on this question? There was a little number by chat and then it didn't pop up. I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, sounds really awful. We're gonna get an email, Town Health Officer Report. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good to know.
Okay, so the Dutchie Store looks pretty good shape. I'm, I'm happy. I drive through and look at that, say, God, that's, that's good. There's a nice big pile of sand in, in that hole. There's not a dangerous wooden structure there, just inviting somebody to get hurt, so that's definitely a plus.
I think once they, you know, get it filled in, we probably should, uh, put some top floor on it, seat it, depending on how they finish it, um, or put some stone on it just so it doesn't constantly erode.
I think there's a little bit more work that could be done down back on some brush piles and stuff that, if they have the time. There's, there's some dirt piles that were left residual from the store and it just needs a little bit of attention, and I think it could probably easily be graded out well enough with the, with the backhoe.
Good.
I'm not really sure. We need to kinda get with Ray and know exactly if he knows exactly where his boundary is, so we're not.
I'm sure that he does. The guys actually came through him, uh, to get to that.
Yeah.
The store, as opposed to peering up the right of way, so. That was nice of him to let us do that, and I'm sure he knows right where the line is.
So I just don't wanna make any mess on it that he doesn't approve of. I mean, if there's something that needs to be buttered up or something, well, that's fine because he lets us have access to the sewer plant and stuff like that. I don't mind spending a little bit of time to smooth out his while we're back there, but I don't wanna do anything that he doesn't approve of.
Sure, I agree.
And you're still kinda looking around for trucks, Keith?
Yeah, so, um, Keith stopped in this week, uh, it was yesterday, and he did get a price from Mack, and I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I'm not sure we're in a position right yet to pull the trigger on one. I think we'll get a few more prices before I bring them all in, and bring them all in at once. And that was just a cabin chassis, uh, price, and it was the same, that was a Mack, just like one of the two red ones that we have.
Yeah.
Same motor, same transmission, rear ends, uh, frame. And then we'd have to get a price on setting it up as well.
Right.
With the plow and box and sander and... But I know he had talked with the Learys as well in regards to an international, so we can, you know, as soon as he brings that in, we'll gather up as much information as I can and then bring it all in and we can, yeah.
I don't know. The last, last time we bought a truck to Kenworth, there was a little bit of question about whether the, the frame, the front frame beyond the axle, they, they wanted to put some strength in our plates on it to satisfy the plow and not, made Keith and me a little bit nervous.
Oh, they wanted to reinforce the frame?
Yeah, they wanted, in order to put a plow frame on, they wanted to put from the axle forward, they wanted to put some plates on and.
Some custom work.
Yeah, I, you know, and it, it looks like a lot of towns are buying Western stars too, so.
Yeah, we could look into that. And Tracy out in, uh, Glen's Falls sells those. That's a good idea. We could see.
I think isn't that what Dorset bought the last time they bought a Western star, right?
I'm not sure.
I believe so. It was, I, I'm quite sure they have one, but it seems like when you travel, you see some, like, especially being Tracy in Glen's Falls, that's a short trip to, for service if you need anything, so.
Yeah, and they've got a full shop usually too, uh, you know, mechanics there and good parts.
Right, they're a pretty big outfit, you know, they have a lot of branches in New York State, so it certainly would be, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the Mack for the most part. They seem to be set up well, so we need to, I think we would need to mirror, mirror those trucks, as far as I can tell. I mean, we, we run them ten years now, that first one's ten years old and.
Yeah, yeah, they're a good combination.
They seem to work, work well for that, so. Okay, and you'll, you'll just keep working on that and?
Yeah, it really was no sense in bringing just that one in. We'll.
Yeah, no, no.
Gather some more.
And we don't wanna bounce any numbers out until everybody has a fair crack at it.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing, nothing, um, out loud until everybody has their chance, so. Other than that, um, yes, we're pretty well, pretty well set?
Signs, the speed signs.
Oh, speed signs.
So did we end up ordering them? Cause I know Julie messaged us and was like, is it okay? It went up a little bit.
Yes, so I sent them out. Everybody, everybody was fine with the increase.
Okay.
So I have to send them back to Foreman. We'll move ahead and order those, but I kind of just wanted to wait and hear because everybody was okay with it, but there was some back and forth about the price increase, so before I sent the Foreman, I figured we could just talk about it, make sure everybody is on board officially. I mean, I know.
Do you have those numbers so we could like make an official motion right now? Sign them in, probably half an hour or so. I'll go through my phone and find it.
I mean, it's not surprising they went up. It was like, you know, since last year.
Yeah, just surprising they only went up that much.
Yeah, everything's gone up. So the last ones. So for the two signs that we ordered on May 12th of 2021, the total price was $5,825. And... For these two, it, the total would be $6,499.
So it's gone up about 600 bucks. Yeah.
Three hundred and some bucks a sign. Three hundred bucks a sign?
And when I asked them about it, cause I did email him back and inquired as to why it went up, he said.
Hundred percent.
The answer was, unfortunately, the situation that we're in globally is not kind to anyone. All of our electronic components and manufacturing costs have increased because of these recent events. This model has also been improved since your last purchase. The main visual difference, along with numerous internal improvements, you will see is that we have added a 3M diamond grade reflective sheeting onto the front face of the sign. This sheeting lights up with, lights up the sign at night with headlights when they come into contact with it. So something else too that, I mean, it could, that could be of benefit as well.
Somebody wanna make a motion that we approve those, those signs at that new approved price and that way it covers all of us?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the signs at that new price. They, they've been very effective, and I think getting two more is gonna be worth it.
Yes, so my only question is, did you guys, you already approved buying these two signs, just not the new price, right?
Right, we, we felt, we, it, we was determined, we asked about it, we were determined that we had put this money in last year's budget that just ended, but Julie said that she could still bill it against that, cause it was still in the budget. So we, we had put a line item interest, um, fifty-eight or six thousand dollars for the budget, so we just gotta just find another five hundred bucks basically to add on to it. And we, we approved, we voted and approved them.
Eyes and cross the Ts, but there was a motion at the last meeting to purchase two additional speed signs. There was no note about price or anything. Um, but if you wanna, we could certainly do another one.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, it would be just as clean if we just run a motion through. Frank?
Uh, I thought it would be an advantage to have four of the same and then interchange parts if you have one go bad. What would need to cost to upgrade the parts to the signs we have now, so you have four of them the same?
We're gonna get two more of the ones he asked to offer. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Get on, Betty.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second that motion. All in favor of getting two, two road signs at, uh, the new price of $6,499 for the pair? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you.
And then the other thing was, um, relocate, so do we, do you, do we wanna relocate the two that we currently have, or wait? I mean, I think that I've just done a little bit of driving around and considering, and I think that it could be of benefit to take the one that, as you're heading north on Route 30, as you're heading into town, it might be of benefit to put one as you're heading south, just like across from the Barn Restaurant when the speed lim, speed limit goes down to thirty-five, right there. Um, that could be a good spot. I don't know. I know there's been some feedback from other folks of people cruising right along on 133, um, but that's also this side of town. I think that, so, I don't know. I mean, I can let everybody know when the order is confirmed, what they're saying the shipping will be, and maybe it will make more sense just to do all four in one shot.
Well, I know that we've had a request to move the one in Westfall, right? Didn't we have a request for that?
I think so. I just don't recall where.
Yeah, I don't either, but I think Jennifer probably knows. I don't remember if she was the one who asked about it or someone else.
Okay.
But, um, and then we had that request to put one on 133. I don't know exactly where that gentleman lives on 133, but people definitely do come around that curve and down that hill at pretty high speeds.
Yes, right by the end of Harrods Brook, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, right by where the end of Harrods Brook is, cause that's where it drops to.
Yeah, that does.
Yeah, that's where it drops, and people just whip around there quite a lot.
Yeah.
It probably makes sense if the town crew has time to move them, to move them, because by the time we get the new signs ordered, then we build the support structures that could drag out for a while.
Yeah.
To receive them, so.
I know in the past we talked about how they might move them before school starts, you know, when they're done with the project they're on now, then they might have time to move them, you know, just before the fall.
And I, I think that, you know, moving them is not gonna be an issue once we know where they're going. Once we determine exactly where we want them, we'll have them moved in no time.
Yeah.
We just need to say, hey, we want this one here and this one here, and next week they'll be moved.
Right.
Or this week they'll be moved. But until we know exactly where they're going, you know, we're not gonna have them moving. So if you want, we'll put one on 133 there. We'll have to talk to a landowner, right? By like, uh, across from Chris Ross's?
Yeah.
Eric Baker's.
Yeah, sure, somewhere in there, yeah.
So I can talk with the town crew and see maybe who owns that property there. And then the other one, do you, where do you think that one should go?
Westfall it. I guess why don't we follow up with Jennifer and see if she can recall?
Nah, I, I feel like it was her who was bringing it up, but it might've been someone else.
I think it was somebody else. I'm just seeing if I can.
Yeah. My, my, my vague memory was that they wanted to move it to the other entrance into town on 153, but.
I mean, I don't see the harm in just kind of having the road crew select a space that they think, and the road liaison selecting a spot that they think would be suitable for it, and we can put them there, and then that's the point. They're, they're portable. So if, you know, in the last time we put the sign up in, in Westfall it, we had to move it ever so slightly. Do you remember? That was the first time?
Down by the dump it was, and.
Yeah, we scooched it up a little bit, or down, or whatever, so I think that that would make sense.
Sounds good. We'll move the signs.
Yeah.
Alright.
Excellent. Anything from the assessor?
Um, I don't think so.
Do you have anything to offer from the assessors, John? Have you had any communications with them?
No, I haven't had any contact. We had one, uh, uh, landowner has had a problem with getting, uh, correct that certain property, and we're working through that, but.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Town clerk's memo.
So Deb, uh, sent an email and said that there's no memo for tonight, but she did give Jessica some items to address. She's also asked a local cabinet maker to give a price on transitioning the door to her office into a Murphy door, which was something she had talked about doing before, but Royal Glass never followed through. Um, but now that, as we're transitioning to a kind of new chapter of COVID and everything, she'd like to do that, so that's coming.
So the things that Deb gave me is obviously this litigation thing, which we're gonna talk about later. She also gave me, this was a quote for evidently we gotta soon replace our printer copier, so she has a quote here for a replacement printer copier. And I know that in Julie's report, she had a little thing about the current printer copier contract. Um, the other thing that Deb was talking to me about was, we had in the past discussed using some of the ARPA funds for some air filtration units in the, um, in the town hall. And given that we're probably going to stop requiring masks in general in the town hall, having the air filtration units can really help keep, you know, it filters out germs of all kinds. And so Deb went ahead and got a, um, she evidently had someone who'd been wanting to give her a, um, a quote on getting air filtration units for the town hall. And so she got here an air filtration units, which would be four of these slightly larger ones that looks like they're, would be one each for the clerk's office, the main area, the treasurer's office, and the assessor office, and then an extra small one for the zoning admin office. So this is a quote that she got regarding those. And I personally think it would be a good idea since it's some, you know, we talked last time about how we wanna, you know, support the, the town clerk and the town treasurer, and I think it would just improve the air quality in general. It's only for the downstairs, obviously, not for here.
I have a question in regards to that quote. Um, there's some really good lease opportunities. They're not necessarily lease opportunities, but, um, where company brings one of these in, you know, of your choosing, and then they, they keep it full of ink and they pay for it or whatever they take, and take care of all the maintenance. I think it wouldn't be bad to look at that as well.
I think we're currently leasing the one we have, and I think there might be a lease option on here. This is the lease right here, the sixty-month lease.
That's not to buy?
I'm not sure.
I didn't bring my glasses with me, so I can't see it, but.
Do you have any insight, distance?
On?
On whether we're currently leasing the one we've got?
I believe we are.
Okay.
I think, or, I think at the very least we do have a maintenance, right, like program and plan.
Yeah, let's see what it says here about the, about the paper. Yeah, I've got a little difficulty seeing up close too. Let's see, um, statement. Backs kit. Yeah, it says lease return is included, delivery, installation, and training is included, and we can do 2,500 black and white and 400 color prints per month. So let's see, this is a quotation, lease rates subject to change. Rates are locked for sixty months. It says, it includes all parts, travel, labor, and toner, so it does include the toner, and it excludes paper. That's what that says. I'm sure that we can ask Deb more about that.
So they've got the two options. They've got the purchase price and then they've got the lease price.
I think that's what's going on, but don't, don't quote me. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to really talk about this with Deb. She just was like, here's the quote for, that we're thinking about for the new, for the new machine.
I mean, if that truly is, you know, a lease price with all of that, that's a good, that's a good number. If that's a one and not a three.
Yeah.
It's 142, right?
Uh-huh, yeah, I gotta push it away from my face. 142, yeah.
That's a good price if that truly is what it means. That's a good price if that truly is what it means. Yeah, I don't think we'd ever want to own one of those and then maintain it.
Not a chance. Not a chance. No, just keep turning them over. I would say that, somebody want to make a motion to have her upgrade this? Or do we want to check out with some other lease, other copier people, or? I, it, when they're in the business like that, they're all going to have a little story, but when the dust all settles, they're, they gotta be pretty close to each other, otherwise they're not good.
Yeah, and I imagine that this, this is the same company, the, up in the left-hand corner, what is that? RSB or USB? That's the same company we've been working with to do the lease before.
Right.
Because Julie was talking to me about that.
Office Systems of Vermont.
Yeah, it's basically, it looks very similar to the one that we have. It's just a, we've just, from what Julie was saying, we've just sort of done our 60 months on the old one, right? And so now we're on like a sort of month-to-month lease with them, and so now is the time to like start leasing a newer, better one, since we finished the lease on the old one.
Definitely.
All right, yeah, I'll move that we go ahead and lease the new printer copier.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Harley, you got a question?
Um, there was talk of buying a scanner.
Uh-huh.
And I keep hearing about this described as printer copier. Is printer copier scanner an option?
This is a scanner also, I believe. Is that correct, Kristen? You've used it.
It does have scanning capabilities. The scanner that's also been discussed is a larger one that's more capable for maps. Um, so this one that we have is more, it's a business center, more, if you will.
Here's these things.
Yeah.
Eleven by seventeen, probably, but the one Jonas is looking for is like property maps or something like that to be able to, to larger size. Okay. Um, all in favor of, of the new lease for the copier? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Approved. Frank?
You might want to buy this, Jonas, that you've got a scanner coming, because that's what he was looking for too, you know?
Not, not big enough. He's looking for one that's big enough to do maps.
Okay, so yeah, so we're talking about the printer that's down there currently that just needs to be upgraded. Jonas and the assessors and the town hall, or the town clerk are just talking about a specialty scanner that would be utilized for maps and very large documents. So this... Enough that they would like to get a scanner.
All right, I probably better read this other quote for the two who are on the, who are on Zoom. So this is a quote from Eris of Rutland, and evidently Deb knows the rep from them. It, they did a free consultation, and they suggest four units of this one called Eris Beyond Guardian Air, and the units are 2,400 each, and they suggest one of the unit that is AP500, which is, um, oh, they're giving us a discount here, so 2,500 minus something. I can't quite read it. But the, um, smaller unit is 700, and so the four larger units would come to 7,200, plus the 700, it would come to 7,900. That's the quote that they got for these air units. Now, my question would be, do we want to get like a different quote for a different kind of air unit? I mean, I was looking online, and I saw that there were some that are meant for offices that seem to be a little closer to the eight or $900 mark. I mean, I don't know, these folks are out of Rutland, so they're local, whereas like, you know, buying something on Amazon wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily involve installation. Let's see if this is, if it would involve installation.
We have air conditioning downstairs, right? So we have, um, ductwork.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all hot air heating and cooling. We should talk to our furnace people about putting filters in the ductwork.
We could look into that also. Yeah, these units are like standalone units. They're just a little guy you plug, or a big guy that you plug in, and it filters the air through that.
What technology do, do they use filters? Do they use HEPA filters or...?
Yeah, they use HEPA filters. Um, sadly, there's some links here, but I can't click on them because this is a paper. But, yeah, the, the one, all the ones that I looked...
This is the only one you can click on?
Well, the ones I saw online, they all use HEPA filters, and they have a certain rate that the air goes through them so many times, you know, to refresh the air in the room. So I, I don't know about the ones, I, I don't know about the ones that go in the ductwork.
Harley?
There is a big price difference that you're talking about, but one factor there is that they're all using HEPA filters, but what's the noise though? Because if you're downstairs listening to even the noise like a fan like that would tend to wear. So maybe there's cover rating, decibels for the noise, and that's the thing that may differ and make it worth the extra cost.
Hank?
The end system ones might be away from places where people are with the same type of filtration, filtration HEPA, HEPA check that out. I don't know if maybe this is...
You put them in, you put them in your, your feed lines of your, your hot air or your air handling system. And there's multiple amount of filters. You could put UV filters in there. You could put out different grades, MERV 8 or HEPA, um, they'll take the organic mists out and everything, so. I think we need to do some more research before we spend that kind of money. I, I feel that there's a few more avenues we should explore to see if this is the, maybe the best option for us.
Kristen has her hand up. I just wanted to add that we have, I have a filter at home, an air filter. It's called, um, I just looked it up. It's called Blue Air, and it's all HEPA, and there's like several different filters, and it's great for allergens, and it said it's good for, you know, all the stuff that people are trying to filter right now, and one unit that's a pretty good size, and it covers a decent amount of square footage, I don't know off the top of my head, is around $300.
Yeah, I've heard good things about them as well.
Yeah, it's a really good product, and we've had it for a while and run it all the time.
How loud is it, Kristen?
So quiet. You don't even know it's going. Um, so it's super, super quiet, and there's different filters that you can add to it. I mean, there's like the basic model, but then there's all different sorts of things that you can put in.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had it for quite a while and have only had to replace the filter one time. It tells you when the filter needs to be replaced. It's a bit expensive, but, I mean, if baseline, if you purchase, let's say we would, if, I don't know, maybe three, you know, and then you have to replace the filters every so often, it would be around, say, $1,000. And there are all different models too for different sizes.
Blue Air, right?
Blue Air, yeah. I can, I can send the link to Deb. Um, and it's not Amazon, not that there's, you know, for, if that's something that's, it just seems like a pretty decent company, and, I don't know. I have had positive experiences with it. It's really, really quiet.
Maybe she could get a quote from them as well, since you know that they're very quiet.
It's just a website. I mean, it's simple. It's just going online and picking out the model that you want and ordering it, and that just, you know, comes in a couple of days. It's really easy to set up.
Yeah, because the only thing I wonder about the one that would go, again, I know nothing about the filters that go through the, um, through the ductwork, but would those run efficiently on days when we aren't really heating or cooling? You know, those days where we're just kind, the temperature's good, right? I'm not sure if it would filter the air on those days.
When you, when you're not calling for heat or cooling, you just have fan on, and the fan, the fan will just stay running and circulate the air through the room.
So who would we talk to to get a quote on that part?
Probably M&amp;M are the ones that have been doing the last couple services on our M&amp;M Plumbing and Heating.
Do you want me to write Deb a message and tell her about Blue Air and maybe see if she wants to inquire about getting ducted?
Yeah. It sounds like our senses that we'd like to do this. We just want, we just want, we want something, but we want it to be the best one and to be economic.
Right, and, and like some of those small ones, you may need to change the filters often where, if it's in the ductwork, when they do the, the services on the, on the, uh, air conditioning and heating, they can change all the filters, you know, and it's all handled there. So, anything else? We'll see if we can get some more information on that. Anything else for the town clerk? Okay, uh, treasurer's report?
So there are two warrants this week. The payroll for the period was $11,012. Accounts payable was $35,942.42. General fund monies $14,627.56. Highway $29,707.67. Wastewater $2,006.07.31. Please see contract for approval from Foley's. Please see contract from Delage Landon. I had spoken to Jessica about this, but after that, I read the fine print, and technically this contract auto-renews every 60 days. So when you decide what to do about getting a new copier, we need to decide what to do with this copier, and there will be a cost involved. I have highlighted the paragraph I'm referencing. And Julie's office will be closing early tomorrow, which is Wednesday, August 10th, and the two motions are for payroll warrant 23006 for $11,012, and the accounts payable warrant 23007 for $35,942.42, submitted by Julie Mack.
Well, I might as well go ahead and move that we approve the warrants, the 23006 and 23007.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for the approval of the warrant. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Bob? Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Carrie?
Where's the contract from Foley's?
Do not know.
Probably in this bunch right here. No, they got, all they see is invoices from Foley's.
All right, thank you.
Right here it comes.
I don't see any contract from Foley's. Do you want to look through it?
Because the contract from Delage Landon, that was the one for the old copier. And Julie talked to me about that earlier. She said that they kept billing her, and we were past our 60 months, so she had thought that they were stiffing her, basically, because they kept billing her. But it turns out that it auto-renews for every 60 days.
Until you buy a new copier. Aha, here it is, right here.
Okay.
Apparently Foley would like us to sign this contract in order to guarantee pricing. What pricing, you ask? Good question. It seems to be missing some information.
Uh, what is it for?
Uniform, so I would assume.
Oh, okay.
Probably some grease rags. I'm not sure what is in the contract.
It just says shirts, pants, jackets, and coveralls, but it has no price or no quantity. So... And what it says is right now that they guarantee our current unit price for the first 12 months of this agreement. The price will be increased by 5% on Friday, July 14, 2023.
But it doesn't say what our current price is?
No, it's kind of bizarre.
Well, maybe we should send it back to them and ask them to put in the price.
Right, that, I mean, I don't have any problem signing it, but...
Yeah. So they list this, and it doesn't say anything more here.
Nor does it say a quantity.
No. There's a spot for number of employees, and changes per week, and replacement rate, and it doesn't list any of that stuff. And the second page has a spot to sign.
Should we ease enough to get them to respond to that?
Yeah.
We'll put that with Dylan, Dylan, okay. So we approved the warrant, and she had a memo. Is it, you already read? What's that?
Yes, I already read it.
It's all set. All right. We've covered everything in that.
Covered our bases. Um, is there anything? Okay, so you're going to follow up on the Foley's thing, and then is there anything for, that needs to be done about the other copier contract?
I think that we just approved it, so Deb can tell them to go ahead and bring it on in.
In the memo, she just said that there's going to be cost involved for...
Getting rid of the old one.
Really?
I don't know. She just said what to do about getting the new copier. We need to decide what to do with this copier, and there will be a cost involved. She's highlighted the paragraph, paragraph.
Where's that? Is there another, um, contract under that contract? Is there one that says Delage Landon?
D-E-L-A-G-E.
That is the company that we lease our printer from, so.
Yeah.
I recognize that.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. You want to read it?
No, but I'm going to look at the highlighted part. Oh, man, and I don't have...
Looks like much of Quigley lines to me.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. I might. I have them. Oh, thank goodness. Okay, maybe I can read this line now. Okay, it says, "End of lease, return, purchase option, and renewal. You will give us at least 60 days, but not more than 120 days, written notice before the expiration of the initial lease term." Um, let's see. "With proper notice, you may, A, purchase all the equipment as indicated above under end-of-lease option, fair market value, or B, return all the equipment in good working condition at your cost in a timely manner to a location we designate." Oh, so basically, we have to take it back somehow.
You gotta lug it off.
So I don't think that would cost a lot. It would just mean someone had to take a truck and haul it someplace.
You got it right.
Well, we hope not.
That seems kind of ridiculous that they don't take it back when they bring the new copier.
A different company, I believe.
Um, this company, um, from what Julie told me, this company, Office Systems of Vermont, they contract with that company.
Okay.
So she thought we were going directly through Office Systems of Vermont, but it turns out they contract out with the other company, with Delage Landon.
So Delage is a big shot, and these are just little subcontractors.
Yeah, I think so.
A combination service, just like Sealy Office Systems. Works for them.
But I mean, maybe we can ask when we get this new one if they'll take away the old one, since they have to come out anyway to bring them.
But it's a different, the actual contractor that comes here is a different company.
It might be.
Yeah, that one I believe, well, I'm not sure what that is.
We're probably going to have to stick this on a pallet and chip it somewhere. I betcha. Let's see what they got to do, if that's what we got to do.
Did they say whether the old one was like a Sealy Office Systems or?
Um...
Probably don't know.
I don't think it said on... I don't think it said on there. Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, we can ask Julie to get us more information, I guess. Because we do want, since we do want to get the new one, we do want to give notice on the old one to tell them we don't want it anymore. Give them their sixty days.
Now, we're into a month-to-month? Kind of sounds like maybe we're past the initial lease, and now we're into this sort of...
Yeah, I think that we need to talk to Julie about it when she's here, maybe next time. That sounds like, because the, the details are a little beyond me at this moment. It does sound like, though, we'll probably have to put it on a pallet and send it somewhere.
I think that was everything.
Emergency management director?
Um, Bob Morleano had attended a meeting regarding Operation Flashpoint, given by the FBI and Department of Homeland Security at the Vermont Fire Academy. He also spoke with somebody at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and the Town of Politt and the Politt Fire Department was awarded the passive grant that Bob applied for, um, and that was to obtain emergency road signs, traffic vests, and cones. And so, most of those things have been ordered. That's good.
Anything else?
That's all from Bob. And Jennifer submitted a report through email. Um, Jennifer and Bob Morleano did an inspection of a rental property on School Street in Politt. One quick follow-up to do. Jennifer got a call today, which was a second report of terrible living conditions of an adult mother and son on Walnut Hill Road. It's not a rental property, and after first report, Bob Morleano determined that the property is actually in Danby. Gave the caller contact info for the Danby Town Health Officer, and no further action is required from my end. And just to follow up, um, after the last meeting, I had been in communications with Jennifer, and the monthly mask conversation is going to be at the first meeting of every month, and Jennifer has offered to stay up to date on what the most recent state recommendations are, and so that will be a part of the monthly health officer report.
Waste water treatment. I don't have heard anything. I haven't seen anything from Jill.
There was an email that came in from Jill this afternoon, and it was just, um... The, uh, the treatment facility, DMRs and VTUMs updates. It's quite lengthy, and I don't know if it's worth going through and reading. If anybody wants to see it, I can forward it to them in an email, but it just talked about what they did throughout the month of July, um, and then all of the reports that come through, so... Nothing new to report outside of the ordinary, and if anybody wants to see a copy, I can happily send it along.
It happened to run into area yesterday, and she said that everything seems to be running decent down there, so... Facilities report. Building improvements.
So, um, I don't know if everybody saw the emails, but there were, we got one from Deb and one from Julie that I think Rudd Builders came by and looked at the porch, and there was confusion about what actually wanted to be done on the porch, whether it was replacing the whole porch or just spots. And I didn't know if anybody had gotten back to them, so I replied and said that it was my understanding that from what Deb's report was, that there were just rotted boards that they were interested in replacing. However, I understand that when there's a rotted board, there could be a whole other slew of things. So, I suggested that maybe he just actually assessed the whole thing and see if it could just be as simple as replacing the boards or if it required more. So, I don't hear anything else from that. Um, and then Julie emailed saying that, uh, Rudd Builders came out and looked at the various building projects. She was wondering what the goal is with the steps. I'm assuming library?
Yeah, yeah, that was the library.
Yeah, wondering if the goal was to remove and replace with concrete, stone, or wood. Julie said that she recalled there being something about a handrail, but it can't be attached to the building, and it needs to still be in the center. So, um, we just need to communicate the fine details.
I had sent Dave an email. Dave Armstrong is the owner of Rudd Builders. I had sent him an email, uh, message on Monday, asking him if, when he has a chance, he can swing by. He said, so he came by today, but I never, I haven't talked to him since. So, I'll reach back out to him if that's alright, whatever.
Yeah, that would be great. I think it was a little unfortunate that he came by during the election, you know, because everybody was so busy. I'm not sure that Deb had much time to really interact with him, but...
I think that if he came and looked at it, we could say, you know, what's your opinion of the front? Because sometimes you get into replacing boards, and you got more monkey business.
Yeah.
You might as well just peel them all out and put a whole new deck down instead of just...
If they're gonna, if they're gonna go bad in the next couple of years, we might as well, you know, get ahead of it, and...
Because it was only a few years ago that we had some other boards replaced, you know? So, what do you do? Every few years, do it? Or just have it, have it all redone and, and?
I mean, it's usually more economical if you know you're going to have to do something to do it at scale once, rather than do little bits and bits and bits.
As far as the library stairs, I, I, I don't really know what...
I mean, when Bob and I looked at them before, and correct me, Bob, if I'm wrong, I know Bob had an idea that maybe what we could do is just sort of take off the top part of the concrete, not even like completely redo the steps, but take off the top part of the concrete for each step and put in new concrete, and possibly with some like, some covering or coating on it so that it would be, it would not, people wouldn't slip on it, right? Like a non-stick, no, not, it's not the term. You know what I mean?
Attraction type.
Yeah, like attraction thing. But, that was what Bob had sort of thought might be possible, but wanted someone to have a look at it and see if it could be. Thinking that might be less expensive than completely taking out the steps and putting in new steps.
To bust them all out and start four new steps are going to be quite an undertaking, I would think. But, it's, when you start monkeying around with concrete, there's no easy way, or it, it just always turns into a mess. But I don't know if it, if it's possible. It could be, there was a opinion out at one time that, um, stair treads, like stone treads could be, you know, maybe we could cut the top down and put stone treads on, like blue stone treads or something like that. And that might not be a bad idea, but I just don't know, you know? That's, that's still a lot of work to get it. You'd have to cut the treads down beyond so you had room enough to grow, to, to get your treads up and still stay within your, your proper spacing and all that stuff. Harley?
Um, when you looked at the steps, what struck me was unsafe, Rob. I looked at the steps and it seems, they, they seem fun. And, and so I must be, I might be missing what you are talking about.
I honestly patched them a year ago with, with the epoxy and got all the cracks filled, and I, I honestly haven't even looked at it to see if that's, if that stayed.
Does it still look good?
They look good to me, but I'd be happy to take an action to explore with, uh, you know, to ask the director and ask the board, the chair of the board to point out about the issues that could sneak up.
Because there were, there were definitely some cracks that got a temporary filling, like about a year ago, right?
Actually put epoxy in them.
Yeah.
Which could last for a very long time, actually. So, if you would do a little bit more research, I mean, I, I understand that maybe they're not perfect, but if they're quite functional and not tripped hazard, where do we really need to go with that? I mean, the last time we had it, we had it quoted, it was like a twenty thousand dollar project, to bust the stairs out, and it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like it, they're in that bad a shape.
And since I have it, why don't you make it pass the town hall porch? The steps are, uh, pretty easy. So, I will ask the director and the...
You'll take a kind of a survey of a few of the people and try and gather information and, and see if possibly you can, they can point out what they feel is improper.
Because I'm seeing it, and I'll...
Right. Alright, well, thank you for that. So, we'll kind of back that one down a little bit, and then I'll talk to Dave about what he found. And we also need to talk about Julie's storm windows and stuff.
And the front door.
And the front door.
Yeah, and Julie said that he looked at the front door, and he looked at her window also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Frank?
If you're looking at doing the deck, decking on the porch, uh, can you go with trecks and stuff like that?
Probably not.
The storm?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to have to be approved by, by them before we change it.
That would be a long-term option.
Right.
So, I have a couple other things on facilities. Um, so Sue Laporte sent me a lengthy list of maintenance and repair things that need to be done around Town Hall that she has not been able to get to with, with one thing and another. And so, now they're on my plate. So, I have this list. I'm not going to be able to do anything with them in the next little while, but, um, if it turns out that, that Rudd Builders is, you know, available for the repairs and things, I can look down maybe with, on that list and see what else needs doing. So, anyhow, that's, that's on my long-term thing. The two short-term things are, last week, um, the library director contacted me and said that they had a situation with yellow jackets, that they had a yellow jacket nest that was right by the front, and they had one that was by the back. And I suggested that they contact an exterminator. Because I know yellow jackets aren't any joke. I've tried to deal with them in my yard by like pouring water down them and stuff, and it just makes them angry. So, and they can, you know, if people are going in and out and there's a lot of yellow jackets, I know that could be an issue. So, um, they were going to have somebody come out this coming Friday, um, from Middletown Springs, and get a quote on how to deal with them. So, that's where that's at. Um, the other thing is that last time, I had mentioned that Efficiency Vermont does like, um, an energy consultation for towns. So, I, I contacted them, and they let me know what they do is, it's not like the full energy audit where a contractor comes out and tests like your doors and the seal of your windows and things. This is more that they walk through the town buildings, and they let us know about upgrades we could do to improve efficiency and bring down costs, especially things that there are grants that exist for. Like, you know, to upgrade lighting fixtures or to, or to, you know, get, I'm not sure what they all are, but they can, they can walk through, and they can suggest things that are available that municipalities can do. So, um, I said I would bring it up to the select board. The main question is, um, which town buildings would we want them to consult on? Because they have the full list of the town buildings, including the Town Hall, the fire departments, the wastewater plant, the library, and the town garage. And they would be willing to walk through any number of these buildings and just give suggestions, um, you know, basically do a consultation. What's everybody think?
The Town Hall and the library seem like good candidates, to me. The wastewater building, I guess it could be. Uh, the town garage is, I think, beyond. I think that'd be a waste of time.
Mm-hmm. I mean, in a way, the fire departments kind of do their own thing.
They're, yeah, they're kind of on their own program.
Okay. Town Hall, library. Yeah, I think the wastewater plant, it couldn't hurt, right? Okay, so Town Hall, the library, and the wastewater plant?
Yeah, I think those would be three good choices.
Yeah.
Frank?
When you're communicating with them, I was going to go public, Tom. I was in communication with Brock and Neighbor Works recently.
Mm-hmm.
There's a big chunk of money they just signed. The president just signed it, and there's going to be all sorts of energy money spilling out of Washington. So, maybe if we had a, uh, a meeting, invite citizens in, to see what that means, and also what that might mean for the town as far as its own energy projects are concerned, and what kind of money would be coming forward to not only, you know, the, the suggestions, but then follow up, if there's money, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But many people are not going to know what is going to be available, and if we have, those agencies will know what monies are coming and what we can use them for, and what citizens can use them for, the merchants can use them for. So, maybe you could ask them if they would come down for a meeting, and a public meeting. And we would have, you know, all the players in the meeting to discuss with the public what the options are, etc., I don't know. They probably would have somebody that would go on the road and do this present, do a presentation.
And I imagine that this, I imagine that this, um, his name's Chris, from Efficiency Vermont, he said that he knows about some of the current grants that exist. So, and that's what he would be, he would be consulting with us on like grants that we could apply for as a municipality to improve our energy efficiency and like, you know? But, he may know about possible future things coming forward, or he, I mean, I agree that we should consult with a bunch of the different, you know, Brock and other places, because, yeah, the, the Vermont Legislature this last year did send, did specifically put some money toward municipalities for energy stuff. And I'm sure, like you said, more is going to come down the pipe. So, yeah.
That might be a good thing for public service. Get everybody educated on what's coming.
Alright, so I'll get back with him about those three buildings.
That sounds great.
You're making your time.
That it for facilities?
That's it for me.
Okay, bike and pedestrian grant agreement?
That's this one right here.
So, what do we, congratulations?
It looks like they give us, um, they, they awarded us four hundred thousand, and it's a twenty percent match, so we need to kick in a hundred thousand. Was that, is that right? Or that, would that be eighty? I don't know about my math.
Eighty-four.
Eighty. And we had talked about we might use some ARPA funds toward that because we could.
Now, would that cover one single phase of this project, or?
This was for, we decided on this, it was for, I think, was it two or three crosswalks? It was for sure for the crosswalk across thirty. And with the rapid flashing beacons where someone could push the button and it would flash. And it was for also the sidewalk on either side of the bridge. And it was for the sidewalk to go down one-thirty-three to the church parking lot, and there to be a crosswalk, but without flashing lights, over one-thirty-three to go to the church parking lot. That was for sure involved. I don't remember if there was anything else in it, but that was definitely part of it. I think it took the sidewalk to the post office across the bridge. Yeah, it was basically phase one.
You know, this right here is just, we've been awarded this grant, now we have to sign that we want to take it? And then we need to determine how we want to spend that eighty thousand from the ARPA funds to, to do this project.
And have we gotten prices from contractors?
Um, not yet, but when we did the, when we did the grant, it was the people who we hired for the... Yeah, who estimated it. And they, they estimated kind of high because they, they're thinking about the increase in the cost of, um, materials.
So, with this grant, um, say for instance, a contractor comes in at, uh, three hundred thousand for the project, we don't have to take the whole four hundred? We just match ten percent of the three hundred thousand?
Sixty thousand is all we'd have to kick in if, if the project came in it. That's out.
And then we keep the, the rest for the next phase, or?
I don't think so. It, it sounds like this is a reimbursement grant. I think that language is in there. So, we pay the contractor, and then we get... I think that language is in there. So we pay the contractor and then we get reimbursed. I believe that language is in there. Let me double check. Let's see. Yep. It says, "Funding will be available once the grant agreement is executed. Therefore, reimbursable work cannot begin until the grant agreement is executed." Well, yeah, we don't have a contractor anyhow. "We expect that you will move the project forward expeditiously and have outlined some of those expectations on the enclosed project commitment form." Um, "The local match could include donated or in-kind services or materials." And if we wanted to do that, we would need to present a proposal to the V-Trans project manager for approval. Um, so on the second page, it says that within two months of receiving a fully executed grant agreement, that we, the town, will begin the procurement process for contracted services. So that would be when we put out the RFP. So basically upon getting the grant, we have to put out an RFP within two months. Which, I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't want to do that. And then we will have to get a detailed proposal from the design consultant, which indicates the time duration for key steps. And I'm sure that we can consult with this with the same team that we've been consulting with on the whole project so far.
They're, they're in this for 15% of the total cost. So I think that's the services they would be providing.
So if we get into this and something goes haywire, do, can we back out? At some point, you know, before like we get all our quotes in and then they're way out of sight?
I mean, if we went out to get the quotes and nobody gave us quotes and we didn't, we couldn't do the project, I mean, then we wouldn't have any expenses that were reimbursable, right?
But what if like, if everybody's quotes come in like 450 or something like that, you know, it's like, no, we don't, we don't have that extra money to go, what?
I'm not sure. At that point, we might have to scale the project back a little bit, maybe just like do the crosswalk and a couple sidewalks or something and not do as much.
I think we're accepting the funds and committing to doing the project. That's my understanding of it. I think it's frowned upon to,
Once we sign this paper, we're committed.
I believe so. And especially, my understanding is that, so this is phase one of, you know, which we had discussed could be a decade-long project or more to do the full sidewalk concept that had been proposed, but I think that if the town is planning to continue to apply for grant funding in the future to continue to progress the sidewalks, it's probably in our best interest to make sure that we feel confident that we'll be able to take advantage of this.
Part of the concept in my mind of doing this is first, we really need a crosswalk across that dangerous intersection. And that once we do this project, then V-Trans is likely to look again at the speed limit and consider if they're gonna do anything about our intersection. So.
I don't think that, based on what I've been reading about it and all of the presentations that were put out there about this project, I don't think that there would be too much trouble with it exceeding that funding. Especially for this first section and it seems like there are ways that we could scale it back if we needed to. I mean, there's different materials that we could use for the crosswalks themselves and there's different sorts of sign beacons and there's, you know, we could, there's opportunity for corner cutting, I think, if, if we needed to do that.
And if I recall, when we, at the, um, the grant proposal that the consultants put together, they had initially added like a padding of 15% or so and then Peter Pochop from the V-Trans was like, "You might want to add a little more padding just thinking about inflation." So I think they ended up adding like another 10% or so in padding for what they thought it would cost. So they were very realistic about costs. So I think it's less likely that we're gonna get a gigantic overrun because they did, partly, they didn't know about with the bridge, how much we might overrun because of building on the bridge. So I think they put 20% extra on that part. So.
Okay.
About is the timeline in which we need to spend the money. Because it's a fiscal year 23 grant program and I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say we probably aren't gonna do this before winter.
No, but it says we have to do the RFP within two months. But, I mean, if we did an RFP now, the person would be making a proposal for next summer, I would think, yeah. I mean, there's no way you can like build sidewalks in the winter. It's just not gonna happen.
Okay, so that's, I wasn't totally clear on that.
And ARPA funds can be used to bridge the gap?
They can be used, yeah. They can be used for anything that we would normally use government funds on. And building sidewalks is something that we could normally use government funds on. Yeah. I mean, I guess I'll go ahead and move that we sign this grant agreement.
John or Bob, do you have any comments on this grant agreement?
John.
So Jessica's made a motion on the floor. Do either of you want to second that to go ahead with this? Just accepting this grant for $400,000 that we have to have a 20% match and possibly some of it could be in-kind service?
I'll second that.
Okay, Rich is second.
So Rich just seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of signing this grant to do the sidewalk project and, uh, accept the $400,000 with a 20% match? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Alright, let's see, let's see what kind of signature we need on here. Authorized Municipal Official. That's probably you, Mike.
Probably me.
Okay. And these are the other two ones?
Yes, so there's, um, the Town Highway Structures Program Grant Agreement and then the, Grants and Aid, I think.
So in regards to the West Pollitt Road, right?
Yes, so one of them is the Agency of Transportation for the $100,000.
Yeah, this is the $100,000.
So that's for the $100,000 for the Agency of Transportation to put towards the West Pollitt Road.
I'll move to approve that.
Okay. Alright, I'll second that one.
Says?
It says, um, Town and High, Town Highway Structures Fiscal Year 23. Let's see if it says anything more here.
It's for $100,000.
Yeah, for $100,000.
So we got motion made and carried to, uh, accept the Town Highway Structures Grant for $100,000 to start the work on repairing 153 at quarry number four in West Pollitt where the road is sliding in.
Did that have any match or in-kind?
No, I think yes.
Cause it would be on the page.
Yeah, I'll give it back.
I will. Let me pull my glasses back on so I can see for sure. Uh, 10%. 10% match or in-kind?
Which we felt we could be able easily do by labor, right?
Mm-hmm. Alright, I'll pass this on back then.
You say 10% match or in-kind service?
Yes.
And we're also working on getting that particular project as well.
Okay, all in favor of, of accepting the state bridge grant for $100,000? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Carried. Is there someplace I can, I don't know.
I just wanna make sure. Bike and pedestrian grant, is that through?
Um, let me have a look here. It is,
Is it the Agency of Transportation?
It is through Vermont Agency of Transportation.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So these both are. The last two, okay.
And in fact, the third one, Kristen, is also Agency of Transportation.
That's for municipal.
Municipal mitigation grants and aid fiscal year 23. And I'll just, I'll just read off this. It's $22,000 and our match or in-kind is a 20% required match, which is $5,500. I believe we've gotten this grant multiple times, right? It's the one we can use for the roads that are connected to water.
It's the one that involves management practices, so it's pretty cut and dry and I don't think that there's a specific project that's,
Where do we intend on using that one?
Does Keith know? There's always somewhere to use it.
Yeah, I think we just have to communicate with the Agency of Transportation and they have a long list of, of, I think that these are the hydrologically connected roadways.
Yeah, I remember meeting with them last year.
Yeah, it was the, same thing as the Harriberg Road project.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, most of our roads are hydrologically connected.
So, we have a motion made and seconded?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve this, that we sign this grant. It's not in front of me right now. Can you look on the third page, Mike, and see the numbers? It had the amount for the number and the in-kind.
Total award is $22,000.
And the match is kind of in the middle? Near the top?
$5,500 match slash in-kind. $5,500.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Carried. We are done with all the anti-lease business? That's so. New Business Town Green Bench Maintenance.
So, received an email today. Where is that? Oh. Um, so, "Bob and Martha Shoneman have noticed that the two benches and table placed on the Pollitt Village Green to honor Gordon Brown some years ago are now covered with lichen. Are these under the jurisdiction of the Pollitt Select Board because the town owns the Village Green? Or does the library board have jurisdiction? Gordon served on the library board and was also active in raising money to convert the Pollitt Village School Building into a community library. We are asking because we would like to volunteer to clean them up and would like to obtain permission to do so from the appropriate board."
Well, that's nice of them to offer to clean them up.
I would say that that would be awesome and we'll give them permission.
Yeah.
Do we need to, we don't even need the board. Does anybody have any, any, um, opinion on having Bob and Martha clean the benches? They volunteered to clean the lichens off the benches. Is everybody okay with that? Hearing nothing from anyone else on the board, we'll graciously thank them for cleaning the benches.
So the thing I had on New Business was about the D&amp;H Rail Trail. Let me pull up the, the email that they sent me. So basically, um, I think it's the Agency of AOT. Not sure which agency that is. Agency of Transportation. So, um, they are looking to schedule a meeting in mid to late September with the D&amp;H Rail, Rail Communities and the, and the Regional Planning Commissions. They want, the meeting purpose would be for V-Trans staff to meet with municipal staff and other appropriate stakeholders to discuss AOT roles and responsibilities in the post-FPR era. So I guess it's being moved from Forest, Park and Recreation to Agency of Transportation. To discuss any maintenance and/or asset condition concerns, which we definitely want to discuss with them. To discuss existing resources for communities interested in planning and/or improvement work along or adjacent to the D&amp;H, which is kind of what we're talking about anyhow with the West Pollitt planning. And for the communities to have time to discuss any current local projects. So she wanted to know, um, Jackie Casino messaged me. And she wanted to know if there's anyone else from Pollitt who should be included in this conversation. And, uh, so I wanted, it looks like they're scheduling the first meeting for probably September the 14th, which is a Wednesday. So I just wanted to bring up if there's anybody else from Pollitt or West Pollitt who we thought would be interested in talking about the rail trail. I can go to the meeting, but also if anybody else wants to go, I want to,
Where is the meeting?
Um, we're probably gonna try to hold it here in Pollitt if we can use either the downstairs of Town Hall or the upstairs during that day.
I'll see what my schedule brings.
Okay. And once, yeah, they just were doing a poll for what the time would be. So once they have the time of this meeting, I'll just let you know, Kristen, and you can let everybody know maybe.
You can block it off on the calendar too, if you want to use, ever space.
Mm-hmm.
You're already thinking this, but with a planning group and a paid planner, we should know that this is part of the conversation.
Yeah. Um, I'll let, I'll let Michael know about this.
And also let them know we have a group up in the morning.
I believe Michael Allen has been separately in touch with, um, with Jackie regarding putting up a sign for, um,
Serving.
For the serving, yeah. So I think he's been in touch with her separately, but I'll make sure that they're in conversation.
Some of the data on the signs, have you seen those, Mike? I've seen the ridge there, but they go in. Not exactly 100% correct, I don't think. So that may be fixed. Take a look at it, see what you think from this.
So there's that. And the other thing about the rail trail was she just messaged me yesterday saying that they had gotten a call from someone about some trees down on the D&amp;H Rail Trail in Pollitt. But the phone, it wasn't a good connection and they tried to call them back, but they couldn't get through to them. So, um, they were wondering if there's anybody we have in Pollitt who would be willing to find out where on the rail trail these trees were down. And I didn't know the answer to that, so I said I'd ask.
Rich, I don't know.
It's the state's responsibility, isn't it? On the rail trail.
Put your hiking boots on, Frank.
Huh?
Can't be volunteer, Frank.
The question is, of, uh, it's in New York State, right?
No, I don't really think that that crosses. I think it does across to the Switch Road, is what their, their old tail was. I don't really know for sure. But I thought that it was, there was, up until it got to the Switch Road.
Well, if you want me to, I can let her know that we don't have anybody who we go look at, so she's gonna have to send somebody.
Check with Rhonda, see if she heard any feedback from anybody, maybe she,
Yeah, see if she's heard about it.
She hikes it quite regular, I think, doesn't she?
I'll write back and I'll include Rhonda in the email and see if Rhonda knows about where it is.
She might hear something.
Okay.
The only person that I know that would.
Okay.
We'll hand you a chainsaw and a pair of boots.
Alright, so I'll, I'll message Rhonda.
The last thing is the library board member. So Diane Mack wrote to the Select Board sharing that there's an opening on the library board. board. We would like to nominate Grace Larson. She is a resident of Pollitt and has expressed an interest in working with the library. Are there action steps the library needs to take so that she can join us on the board in September? Thanks for your continued support.
I don't know any details about how we gotta do it, other than approval.
Yeah, I seem to remember that, the, yeah, I think that if there, if the library board comes to the select board with a...
Nominee.
Nominee, I think the select board just may, perhaps makes a motion to support that. I think that's what's been done in the past, but I don't know.
Do you remember, John, is that, is that as simple as that, that we just have to approve the library's nomination for the new board member?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Maybe it's to fill, we just need to know...
To fill the vacant seat until that, until that seat expires.
Until that seat expires.
All right.
I mean, it would be helpful...
I will plan.
Okay.
So somebody wanna make a motion that we appoint?
Grace Larson?
Larson to fill the vacant seat on the library board?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Rich will second it. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Rich, uh, Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Approved.
Who made the motion?
Me.
I gotta go in here.
I think that was everything that I had for new business.
Anybody have any public comment tonight? Do I hear a motion to move into executive session to discuss litigation?
I do.
Rich?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Bob? Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.